Okay, everybody, so let me stop my screen there and
Here.
Howdy. Okay. All right, so I can't tell you how excited I am about hosting this particular session. This is something that is near and dear to my heart and that I've been thinking about ever since I joined the staff of the Everson nearly two years ago. First of all, hi, my name is Garth Johnson and I am the Paul Phillips and Sharon Sullivan, curator of ceramics at the Everson Museum. We've been hosting these weekly Zoom get-togethers since the pandemic started. And I'm happy to say that the Everson, I think, actually has a day for reopening. So we are going to be taking it pretty slow and we're going to be starting right around August 1st, I believe. So if you have been chomping at the bit to get back to the Everson, you could come do it in a socially distant way. We're going to require masks. We are wiping the hell out of everything with disinfectants. And we want to reassure you that the Everson is going to be a safe place for you to come visit. Exhibitions that I've curated, including Renegades and Reformers in our ceramics gallery, will be open to the public again. And I am so, so excited. We're going to be doing these sessions for at least the next four weeks weekly. And then, starting in August and starting when the museum opens to the public again, I'm going to keep doing them at least monthly. So look forward to other programming from the Everson. Before I do a few housekeeping things, I want to introduce our special guest for today. Today, we're going to be talking about the work of pioneering queer ceramic artist Sasha Brastow, someone who is very important to the Everson collection. And there is one human being on this planet that has been pursuing Sasha Brastow and his legacy and his archives and his ephemera and his work with a dogged passion. And that is Mr. Steve Conti. Steve was the author of The Collector's Encyclopedia of Sasha Brastow, an incredible valuable book that unfortunately, because of some limitations that we'll be talking about, doesn't necessarily tell the entire story. So Steve is an antiques dealer. He is a historian. He is a denizen of Los Angeles and its culture. So without further ado, welcome, Mr. Steve Conti.
Thank you. Good morning, or good afternoon, I should say.
Well, it is morning, your time, and I saw that there are some other Californians that are logging in and viewing at 10 o'clock in the morning. So I did see that Patsy Cox from University of California, Northridge, is on this call. And Sasha's legacy has enabled lots of different things. And one of them is a series of scholarships at different universities in the Cal State system, I think, in particular. So Cal State Northridge is able to give a yearly scholarship to a deserving student in Sasha's name. And I do understand from Patsy that the students that tend to get the award, like Sasha, are sort of iconoclastic weirdo, one-off, awesome people. So
Slightly outsider, exactly, and always on the cutting edge.
Boom, exactly. Before we really get into it with Steve, I'm just going to do a few housekeeping things, share a few slides, talk about a few things in the Eversons' collection. And as I'm going to do that, I mentioned that we're going to be going weekly for, you know, at least the next month. But next Friday is the Friday before the Fourth of July holiday. And for the first time in four months, I am taking a damn Friday off. So I'm going to be in my hammock, probably with a cold beverage, maybe something on the grill, getting ready for the Fourth of July weekend. So we will not be here next July 3rd, but you can go visit our archives and you can view any of our archived conversations if you have that burning need in your heart for content from the Everson. And we will be doing other contents on July 4th. All right, so let me go ahead and bring up my slides really quickly. So I want to remind everyone that you can go to www.everson.org and you can see messages right now from our board chair and our director. And you can find out about activities that the Everson is engaged with. We have stayed busy through the pandemic. And particularly right now, the Everson has become something of a hub for the Black Lives Matter movement in Syracuse. People are using the Everson as a point of protest. We are showing banners right now outside of the museum that were designed by Carrie Mae Weems, who is a member of our board, and helping to sort of orchestrate our response and planning from the museum when it comes to what we do, the exhibitions that we do. So please check that material out. And I want to give you a quick reminder to check out the Everson's online database of our collection. We have a lot of material from the Ceramic National Exhibitions, including the pieces from Sasha Brastow that are in our collection. You can always find high-resolution photos of them and find out information and look at the catalog from the years that Sasha Brastow participated in the Ceramic Nationals. And then, one final reminder, you have three more days, two and a half more days, to place bids on the Craft Emergency Relief Fund auction. Part of the proceeds from at least one of the pieces in the auction will benefit the Everson. Go bid hard on the Peter Pincus piece. But this auction is filled with innumerable amazing objects from artists from Peter Volkos, who is shown here, to other queer artists in the contemporary world. I saw that there is a Jeremy Brooks piece that is incredible, that is tempting me, that is Chino. Plenty of other important artists and museum-quality work that you can get from the Craft Emergency Relief Fund auction. I'm going to repeat myself a little bit because I was showing a couple of these pieces in celebration of Pride Month, and it is Pride Month. We are celebrating it in different ways, but the Everson's collection, particularly when it comes to ceramics, is largely shaped by the energies of LGBTQ artists from the field of ceramics. And so, looking back, there were certainly plenty of artists who we were showing from the 1920s, the 1930s, the 1940s, who were queer, not necessarily talking about their queer identities. But it is an interesting area of study to find out about, I don't know, the queer underground artists were in dialogue. And we cannot understate the role that LGBTQ artists have played in the history of decorative arts in general. But the way that ceramics and design relate to all of that are hugely important. So just a couple of pieces from the many, many, many in the Everson's collection that are close to my heart. One of them is a piece that came into the collection just last year from the artist Matt Nolan, incredible New York-based artist. He really served as a mentor to me. And there is a lot of sort of above-board and sublimated queer context in his artwork. This one is like all above and below the belt. This is his testosterone teapot. And Everson showed this in one of our Ceramic National Exhibitions after the main series of exhibitions ended. The piece is from 1994. I believe we had a Ceramic National Exhibition in 95. The director of the museum, Ron Cookta, queer individual, and he delighted in showing the work of many queer artists during this point. He took over the leadership of the museum in 1975 and was the leader of the Everson through 1995. And he certainly left a great legacy for the Everson. Another person that we are in sort of constant contact with and dialogue with, particularly in relation to the artist Wayland Gregory, is the academic writer, dealer, Tom Folk. And Wayland Gregory certainly had his own interesting thorny past when it came to sexual identity. It is debated, it is discussed, but so that context is there. But this is a piece that Tom Folk donated to the Everson by an incredible artist, Tom McCanna. And it's actually a series of two teapots called Gay Clay Teapots. And these are large pieces. These are size queen teapots, as it were. And Tom McCanna is a very colorful artist. I believe that he lived in Provincetown for quite a while. I believe he moved to Mexico or somewhere in Latin America for a while. I don't know that he's currently working as an artist, but the context of these pieces are just what I was telling you about, the rich dialogue sort of with queer culture that exists within ceramics. And the names of many ceramic artists that identified as queer are inscribed upon these pieces. So they get shown frequently. I invite you to come visit them at the Everson. And Tom Folk, we thank you for helping to bring these into the collection. So we are here today to talk about the legacy of Sasha Brastow. And as I said before, we couldn't be doing it with any better person than Steve Conti. Steve has really dedicated the last 25 years of his life plus to studying sort of every move that Sasha Brastow made. And when I started looking into Sasha Brastow a couple of years ago, I really felt like, other than the book, information was slightly hard to come by. And I've been happy to see a proliferation of imagery and information come out there. And I'm happy to say that we are working with Steve to do an exhibition for the Everson that will try to sort of fully tell Sasha's story, but centering in on his ceramics, which is really only a portion of Sasha Brastow's output. So Steve, I'm going to bring you on now, and I would love for you to talk about, you know, you are not from Los Angeles, I understand, and you moved to Los Angeles. How did Sasha Brastow come into your orbit and your consciousness?
It was really quite a surprise and fortuitous for me. The first antique mall that I became involved with when I started to attempt to make a living selling antiques and fine art, this is 28 years ago. I actually met Dwayne Bethany and Bill C. A., who are Sasha's longtime friends. They would often bicker about who knew him better. Actually, Bill had met him in the early 50s. And when you talk about queer underground, Dwayne had an antique store, Bill had antique interests, whatever. Sasha was getting very ill at that point. This was six months before he died. It's sort of ironic that, I mean, I am considered a world expert in Sasha's life, but I missed meeting him by just that much because he was very sick. They would come into the mall and show me different examples of his work. I'd never heard of him before. I moved here in 1983, but didn't get involved in collecting and antiques for many, many years after that. And every one of their visits was just filled with one ridiculously hilarious story after another, after another. And I thought, either these guys are just bullshitting me to hit on me, because I was half their age in the old days. The stories were wonderful. So by December of that year of 92, they informed me that their friend was hospitalized and he was not doing very well. Again, I would see them every other week or whatever. And he died February 4th, 1993. And the following time that I saw them, that was when I said, "He lived such an interesting life. Tell me some of the stories and let me chronicle it for you." And that led us into his estate. And that was obviously the whole braille of, you know, every time Sasha's name was in newsprint, he must have had 49 copies of it. Different interviews that newspapers had done, gallery openings, you know, et cetera. So it was really quite eye-opening. And the fact that, you know, he wasn't necessarily someone who would have attended the protests as I've attended and even currently, but he really lived quietly, just by example. You know, he never tried to butcher it up. He didn't have a beard girlfriend necessarily. He had a very interesting Melangeur friends, you know, including Rockefeller. And as I had been told by one of my collaborators, Rockefeller met Sasha in New York City in the mid-40s, and Sasha was wearing one of the outfits of which you're going to show in a couple of moments. And Rockefeller just picked him up, thinking, wow, you know, she's a real dish. And maybe he was a dish and a half, you know, is a better way to put it. As it was presented to me, when they, you know, became a little more friendly and more knowledgeable of each other, Rockefeller learned that Sasha was a man and he didn't really mind. So that's all I can say about that. They really became great, great friends. So it's a privilege for me to even talk about him. I've said this for the past 28 years. Sasha did all the hard work. I just simply wrote a 319-page newspaper article on him, just telling the story.
And I do want to recommend to anybody who is interested in Sasha Brastow, this book is sort of the greatest authority and will remain the greatest authority, although we'll talk a little bit about some of the untold parts of the story that are from this book. But please, you owe it to yourself to pick up a copy. And even though it focuses on collecting and a lot of Sasha Brastow's sort of voluminous ceramic output, you can read between the lines and find enough of the story that Steve is kind of sneaking into the book, and we'll talk about that. Another book that I want to recommend really quickly is a book that is called Cruising the Archive: Queer Art and Culture in Los Angeles, 1945 to 1980. And this was put out by the ONE Archives, the Gay and Lesbian Archives in Los Angeles. And Steve was gracious enough to make sure that they had material relating to Sasha and his social circle. And there are a couple of great pictures of incredible parties that Sasha Brastow hosted that are in this book. Currently, it's out of print and it goes for a whole lot of money, but if you have access to this book, I heartily recommend it. We're lucky enough to have a copy here at the museum. So Steve, I wanted to bring up a topic that is touchy and sort of contested within our historians and sort of museum curators. And I know that we talked about, you know, this call just being kind of, you know, buddy call with me and you talking about Sasha Brastow. But this morning, I was actually emailing back and forth with the curator Ulysses Grant Dietz, who spent many years, his whole career, at the Newark Museum of Art. And while he was at Newark, he actually brought in a set of Sasha's Roman coin porcelainware into the Newark Museum. And so the question that I asked to Ulysses, and I know that there are some other museum professionals out there, and if anyone would like to chime in, I would invite you, if you want to unmute yourself, to chime in. I'm working on several shows at once that revolve around queer figures in ceramics. And opinions are somewhat divided as to whether, I wouldn't say focusing on, because I will never, you know, focus on an artist's personal life in an exhibition, but when I'm considering an artist, I'm looking for viewpoints, I'm looking for ways in, and I'm always considering the artist's social circle, I'm always considering the artist's personality and personal life to an extent. And I feel that when you're talking about Sasha Brastow, that identity is such a part of the artist that I think the answer is right there as to whether or not his identity becomes a part of the material for the exhibition and whether it's exploitative or improper to sort of incorporate that into the exhibition. But I just wanted to invite Ulysses on as a museum curator who has dealt with some of those questions over the years. And you were certainly opinionated on that. So Ulysses, are you able to unmute yourself and hop on for a second?
Oh, yeah. And I apologize for coming in late. In the middle of nothing going on around us, my husband got a flat tire two towns away and I had to go give him my car and get it driven back. So I was all calm and relaxed. But so first, I'm going to jump in, just Garth, because at my age, at almost 65, I still flinch at the word queer, although my children don't, so they seem to use it quite happily. So that's an interesting phenomenon. When I took this Sasha Brastow set into the museum, I knew nothing about him at all. And I knew about him, what little I knew, was through Charles Venable's massive exhibition called Tabletop to TV Tray, which is about America's love affair with dishes. And I happen to think his stuff was wonderful and took in a set, which was actually from the original owner from the 1950s, from New Jersey. So I really knew nothing about him until you started talking about him online. So this book and this little conversation here is really significant to me. And I think this notion of putting an artist's personal life into the content of an exhibition is unwittingly disingenuous. Let's use pretentious words here, because I think you always bring artists' private lives into their art, but it only matters if they're different from you. Is, you're always talking about, I mean, since Cristo just died, he and it was he and his wife. It's always about the people in their lives. And yet, the famous artists from the 1960s who were queer or gay in my generation's parlance, but not anything in their generation's parlance, because Sasha Brastow was my parents' age, that you only keep it, you're only discreet if you think it would be embarrassing them not to be discreet. So I think, and I think Sasha Brastow, as you said to me, that he lived this wonderful gay life in Hollywood, but that was private, never public. And I think of another great Hollywood figure, William Haynes, who was a silent movie actor and became the great Hollywood decorator, because he refused the knuckle-under, but still, he lived a public life and a private life that were very separate. But to say that this private aspect of his life had no influence in his art is to assume that it has no influence in any artist's art. And I just don't think that's true. It has, I think, private life for every human being touches what they do professionally one way or another. So that's my broadest, biggest opinion, so you can argue with me from there.
So, and I'm not looking for validation, but as, you know, as a white, straight artist or a white, straight curator, who is attracted to the work of, you know, many, many queer artists, I think I'm constantly, I don't know, seeking advice and wanting to chart the best course for each artist. And, you know, the next artist, the next project that I'm working on along with Sasha Brastow is Laura Andreessen, you know, Los Angeles Potter, you know, lesbian, hung out in the circle of Imogen Cunningham, and her social circle of sort of power lesbians, I feel, had a lot to do with, I don't know, her and her life, but it isn't nearly as evident in the work as Sasha Brastow's work. And if you have not seen a lot of Sasha Brastow's work, we will be showing it. And I will also be, I don't know, doing a trigger warning. We will be showing some of his erotic output, particularly toward the end of this talk as well, which does not pull punches with anatomy or sexuality. Okay, so let me talk, I've been talking, Lord, I can talk, but I wanted to talk a little bit about how Sasha Brastow came into my life. And Ulysses, like you, I really came in with not an inkling of Sasha or his personality or his lifestyle. And the first that I ever saw was a piece that is here in the Everson's collection, and it was displayed in an exhibition that Peter Held curated here at the Everson called From Funk to Punk: Left Coast Ceramics. And the Everson has a series of six cocktail appetizer trays that Sasha Brastow designed in 1947. So he served in the Army in World War II. We'll get into that in a little bit. Two years after he was out of the Army, he created these pieces and sent them to the Ceramic National Exhibitions at the Syracuse Museum of Fine Art, which later became the Everson. And from the minute that I saw these pieces and knew that they came from 1947, they sort of instantly reconfigured my idea about what ceramic artists were in the 1940s. And they feel so out of time, like in a certain way. And to think about the sort of radical nature of these works in 1947 is still something that boggles my mind. So I'm going to do something that, you know, is part of the power of this series, and that's actually holding objects up to the camera and looking at them up close. And Steve, I'm so sorry, you have never gotten to see these particular pieces in person, although you will get to during the exhibition. And you're actually talking over your phone, so you've got like probably a, you know, four-inch view of these. But those of you who are on computers, I encourage you, if you are not in speaker view, switch to speaker view now rather than gallery view, and even go full screen on your computer. Because one of the things about Sasha Brastow's work is, you know, across the spectrum, there is a subcategory of ceramic artists that has the obsessive detail gene. And that is every fiber of Sasha Brastow's nature. He had this ability to conceptualize a piece. He was an incredible draftsman and an incredible designer. And when he was designing something either two-dimensionally on paper or canvas, or whether he was doing it three-dimensionally on an actual piece of ceramic or a sculpture, he was all about dynamic compositions. He was incredible at planning the pieces out. And I want to point out all of the different layers of this piece. So I will say that the object itself, as a piece of ceramics, is not very special. It's kind of a low-fire or mid-fire creamy, slightly chalky body. It's been glazed all over. There's nothing special about the back. You can see the stilt marks where it was fired. The glaze has crazed a little bit. But Sasha Brastow was in no way a production potter or a production designer at this point. He had a history that we'll talk about in doing sculptural ceramics, but he just sort of, while working as a costume designer in Hollywood, really sort of got the notion in his head to start doing some ceramics again. And this was the shape that they started taking when he was working again. So the whole platter is sprayed with this brown underglaze. And you can see the areas, like, look, so look at the lizard, look at the crazy creature, look at this. I'm going to, let's see, look at the nude woman who is sort of straddling this sort of lizard monster. While he was airbrushing, he was planning for all of this. And then he was daubing away the underglaze with some sort of cotton ball or different brushes. And the quality and the sort of self-assurance of sort of creating these gradations is really incredible to me, sort of thinking about the design. And then he both went in with a sort of tool and did Scrifido. And he scraped away these areas that you see as white lines. And he went in with a very fine brush with, and you can't quite see it unless I'm shifting the plate around, but he made all of these very fine gold lines that create the line work that you see here. And all of that is sort of real gold that is put on using China painting techniques. My guess is with a very fine brush. So with all of these multiple layers that really make the thing an incredible visual tour de force, I mean, I don't see ceramics to this day that sort of have this self-assurance. And people are rediscovering using air And people are rediscovering using airbrushes and spraying on underglazes. But there's a particular visual language, I think, here that Sasha Brastoff really sort of carries into the next two decades of his sort of design career. So I'm kind of putting you on the spot here, Steve, but do you have any comments on this from seeing it as a small image on your phone?
I think they're spectacular. And my first and only introduction of those pieces, again, as I said earlier, getting into Sasha's house and having access at some point to newspaper articles and old interviews, it was only one Xerox of a newspaper clipping that had these trays in them. And and I think there were only three in the, in the article, not the original six. So they really, really are spectacular. You know, it shows how much artistry he put into things, obviously, not only his sexuality, which obviously followed him everywhere he went, but just the whole fantasy aspect of it, too, which is amazing. When I look at what he did in this time period, and then to know that several years later, his welded metal pieces were used in Forbidden Planet, which was the first million dollar science fiction and still holds up today. It's so interesting how each project he did and every item that he created was yet another stepping stone to something else that was going to happen in the future. I think this is amongst his best work. You know, I have heard throughout my entire specialty of Sasha, that really all he did was paint carousel horses onto ashtrays. And I get so pissed off when I hear that, because it's so not necessarily him. They're incredible. I mean, he just pushed the envelope, you'll see plates, women with women, men with men, people with people. I mean, it was really interesting how he incorporated that with these fantasy figures, because science fiction in 1947 wasn't that. And and these were probably done a tad bit, you know, maybe earlier. He was at Fox in '46. He was such a futurist with his designs. And it makes you wonder, what the heck's the backstory? What's, you know, is this Lady Godiva riding her Komodo dragon, you know, through the streets of, or whatever, you know? I think they're absolutely fabulous. And I have seen similar things over the years, but these were not for commercial consumption. As you can imagine, I mean, I can see Rosalind Russell's Auntie Mame serving octopi on crackers on something like this, but pretty much, you know, this was not for the typical American household.
You had Ulysses cracking up there on the side. You know, I want to mention, certainly there's a surrealist influence, and you can't understate also, you know, how surrealism and Salvador Dali's celebrity really sort of crossed paths with Hollywood, you know, in the 30s and 40s. And I think it's all, you know, part of that milieu in in California. And you can trace some of the lineage, but certainly, you know, he was a very original thinker. So I brought out three of the.
There, this is Rick. I hate to break.
No, come on in.
I think one of the things that's being missed there, as far as I'm concerned as a collector, is the notion of the monster. And I really think that monsters are very important to Sasha Brastoff, and that in some sense, even the monsters represent him and his own kind of self-perception as a monster in some ways. And I, I just don't think that should get lost. I, I think it's real. I never met him, but I think it's real.
So Rick, I think that's a really good thing to point out. And when we look at the erotic work in particular, I, I think you nailed it. And I don't know, we could psychoanalyze all day, but we'll be looking at some pieces where certainly he's portraying himself like in that kind of.
I, I just think that's a really important aspect of him as an artist. I, that's my two cents.
No, thank you. I think it's really valuable. Steve, do you have reflections on that?
Well, but I have said that all along. And the fact that the most important piece of enamel work he ever did, not only in my estimation, but according to Bill Cie, who knew him since 1952, is that double alien erotica that you have, which I bought literally right off the wall. It was hanging over his bed, flanked by autographed photos of Elizabeth Taylor and Natalie Wood, two other monsters. But when you look at it and you look at the expression, I mean, he is, as Rick said, I mean, he is a monster, you know, when you hear in Forbidden Planet, Secrets of the Id, well, that's what it's all about with him. He is absolutely portraying himself. That particular piece was the first piece stricken from the book by my publisher, who the editor called me one day and said, you know, the girls down in graphics just keep blowing it up bigger and bigger. You know, there's 69 whatevers in that. I don't want to give away your surprise. But no, it's, it's 100% him autobiographical. And and these are exactly revisitations of these amazing monsters he did back then.
And also, in a sense, it's his way of live, it's his way of getting past himself as a human being, maybe having whatever guilt we may all have as being gay or whatever in his time and place. I think it was his way of accepting himself.
Well, which he did much later on, because in the 70s, he started creating these monster images that he was signing and dating and inscribing. I mean, he was in a much different place. I mean, he had millions of. I think I always say, you know, he died a starving artist with three million bucks in the bank. You know, it's, it's different. Can I say one quick little story, Gar?
Absolutely. And I, by the way, I'm holding up the next. This is. Give people an idea of, you know, how Goya-esque and Bosch-esque that these pieces could be.
I refer to this as drug-induced pot-smoking art. And I know Sasha didn't do drugs and didn't smoke pot. It's just part of that. Bill Cie told me this great story, that when Sasha was really the toast of the town in the mid 50s and had that amazing factory, was making lots of money, zipping around in a yellow convertible, he went to Sasha one day and said, your parents are here. They arrived from Cleveland unannounced. Okay? And Sasha ran out the back door. He said, you know what? I don't want to see them. They didn't want to talk to me during all those years that I was, you know, trying to be myself. He said, just send them out for lunch. And I think, you know, all of us who have experienced similar things, you know, you go through periods of feeling, you know, self-loathing, and then you liberate yourself and you're fine and happy. And but you always revisit those places from when you were younger. So the, these monsters are, to me, they're not monsters. These are glamour girls. I mean, I think they're great. So that one in particular.
I'm going to show one final one, and this one is a little less outre than the others, but it has that same ethereal quality. And, you know, you can see that he's dealing in, throughout his career, he really dealt in these kind of ecstatic images and, you know.
Yeah.
You can see the sort of orient, celebrant lifting their arms to the sky. And you can see these sort of ethereal, and there's a still life that is among these pieces. So there was some real diversity to these, these pieces. He was definitely not churning out these canopy trays as things for mass consumption at that point.
No, not at all. And obviously, they were entered into the competition, but they would not have been sold even in a retail setting. I mean, these were items he would have sold privately, like some of the other pieces you've seen and we've discussed.
And one of the things that I want to point out from the Everson standpoint is that in the 1947 Ceramic National, one of the three jurors was Maya Grothel from Cranbrook. And she was definitely a formalist and someone who loved sort of precision and didn't waste language. And in the jurors' foreword, she kind of singles out this year's crop of Ceramic National. And what the Sasha Brastoff pieces got one of the very top awards from that year's Ceramic National, and she really singles out this 1947 year as a year that kind of moves past some of the, I don't know, she uses the word, I think, whimsical or cutesy animals and sculptures. And Sasha Brastoff had that in him and continued to sort of use that. But these were certainly a breath of fresh air content-wise when it came to the pieces that were in the Ceramic Nationals.
Well, absolutely. And whimsical is definitely subject to interpretation. I, I mentioned that, that couple that came here one day to look at his more unusual work, and everything I showed them, they poo-pooed and, well, it's nice, but the color's off and, you know, blah, blah, blah. And so finally, I took out the ratfish plate, which you've seen.
Which we have, and we'll put up an image, maybe.
And I said, well, this is whimsical, and this tells a story. How would this look in your living room? And the two of them laughed. I mean, it was a great victory on my part. I scared them away.
All right. So one of the great treats that we have right now that is something that really at great personal expense, Steve has rescued from the clutches of history, is a documentary about Sasha Brastoff that originally aired on television. Can you tell us a little bit about the documentary and remind me of the year that the documentary was made? And then we'll show a little clip that's going to tell us a little bit about Sasha Brastoff's upbringing in Cleveland.
Thanks for mentioning it, and thanks for showing the clips. The documentary was shot on 16-millimeter film around 1969 or 1970. When I was involved at Sasha's home, when they were, his executrix was going through his things, throwing things out, et cetera, I came upon the 16-millimeter, the, the master for this, and it was The Life and Times of Sasha Brastoff. I tried at several times to get it, to rescue it, and she threw it in the garbage. It was lost forever. Years later, through one of her family members, I was able to buy Sasha's personal copy, which is what I transferred to DVD and you had. I don't know who put the money behind it, and it was a very mixed crew. It was a British writer-producer, the camera people, the grips, whatever. You know, eventually, when I had my own access to it, my own copy, I looked up everyone through Google and IMDB, and they were all working, very highly talented professionals in Hollywood. That being said, it was shot around 69 or 1970. It aired twice on PBS, the local public television station here, in 1971. Never saw the light of day again. It's 24 minutes long. It was shot in Sasha's house. And what's interesting is, you know, here I am, I had never met Sasha, I never heard his voice. There's no known recording of him. There is the two-minute clip of him as Carmen that you see on YouTube, but MOS because he's lip-syncing. And he was 52 approximately when the documentary was shot. And I was 52 when I sat at great expense in a post-production place in Burbank, not knowing if there was anything on the videotape that I, you know, was transferring, to actually see him in his home. When we helped liquidate the items, they were, everything that's on the walls in 69 is what was in there in 93 when he had died. And you really get a sense of how comfortable he is. You know, he's not necessarily butch, and he's not necessarily femme. I hate the words, but those are the words of my generation. And I agree 1,000%, as you know, Gar, what we talked about, with what Ulysses said about the Q word, because in my generation, it wasn't really, you know, the best thing. Of course, my fiance uses it all the time because he's in a different generation. But the documentary is a great glimpse into who he is. He's naturally very funny. He says some outrageous things, not because they're outrageous, but because they're, you know, that's him, who he is. And to be rescued so many years later, and you and I will discuss what we're going to do with it in the future.
Indeed. So we'll roll clip. I'm just going to show a little two or three-minute clip that talks about his upbringing in Cleveland. And I'm someone who's constantly thinking about the influence of Cleveland on, you know, the generation of artists who came of age between the 1920s and the 1950s. And Sasha's Cleveland history is part of that.
The background of the artist? Sasha Brastoff was born into a family of taxi drivers, prize fighters, and blue-collar workers.
As far back as I can remember, I always knew that I was going to be an artist and wanted to be an artist. I remember even when I was a child, I was cutting off horses' tails and doing sculpture out of the, the manes and the tails and things. I went right from Glenville High School in Cleveland, Ohio, to the Cleveland Art Institute under full scholarship. And actually, it was supposed to have been a four-year course, but the professors pooled their monies together to get me out of there. I didn't quite understand at that time, but they said, if you stay here too long, you'll become a stereotype artist. Get out of town and find yourself. And I went to New York ready for I don't know what, but I knew it would be something to do with art. Living in the village and surrounded by artists was very stimulating. In those days, it was for real. It wasn't phony at all. I mean, different people are developing, experimenting with different techniques. And I found that while I was still sculpting, I had to have a little income coming in. So I taught facial rebuilding for the McAllister School of Embalming. And twice a week, we literally taught at the City Mars. And in the beginning, after all, it is sculpture. We worked with waxes and all that. I was a little squeamish and queenish about the whole thing. But after a while, I literally got carried away, and they fired me because my corpses were too beautiful.
Okay, so that is that little clip. Okay, so let me actually go to sharing the video camera. And I just want to talk a little bit about Sasha's chronology and his arrival into New York and the period of his life before he was enlisted. And I do have another little clip that I can show. This actually might be a good place to just kind of show that clip. So let me go ahead and queue that up. It's been, it's great. I can see images of different reactions, that the little bit of him talking about teaching facial reconstruction for mortuary classes is really good. Okay, so here's a little clip that's going to talk about his arrival in New York City and the Army.
Started lucked out because I found a group of professional sculptures. They called themselves the Clay Club of New York, and it still exists. And it was really a fabulous experience, because I was working with some of the top sculptors of America, and I was able to literally develop as a sculptor. I didn't know that I was going to be a sculptor. But here I was surrounded with all the fabulous equipment, the stimulation of other artists. I was beginning to really do very well as a sculptor in New York. Collectors are buying my work, and I was finding my way into museums and things. And suddenly, I got the draft call to go into the Air Force. And as an airplane mechanic, and at that point, I couldn't even drive a car, literally. I didn't even know it was happening to me. But the next thing I knew, I was shipped back to New York and cast in Wing Victory, the Air Force show. I was brought before all this board, and they said, sing, dance, move. And the next thing I knew, I was Carmen Miranda in Wing Victory, sponsored by the airport. At that point, I was a starlet. Then we went to 20th Century Fox to make the film version of it. And so during the filming of the movie, you know, it takes forever to shoot scenes and all that. I used to draw little sketches while sitting around on the set. I believe Charles Lemare, who found some of my sketches and tracked them down, he said, while you're sitting around here, would you mind just, you know, trying a few things? And I said, like what? And he said, I'll do some sketches for, we're doing a picture called Diamond Horseshoe with Betty Grable. He said, take the Acapulco number and do what you would do. I made everything out of paper, spit and glue, and each costume weighed about 75 pounds. The girls screamed. They couldn't even get through the set. So they literally raised the set so the girls could come through. Cost them a small fortune. They said, this boy has talent. Sign him. When I came out of the service under contract to Fox, I began to do musicals. I told you, I did Betty Grable's things, and then I, I did a period picture called The Razor's Edge with Gene Cherney and all that sort of thing. And again, in between shots, I always liked to work with my hands or do something. So I would relax by sculpting. So I began to do things in clay and glaze and carry on. And fate is strange, but a very good friend of mine, Winter Brockfeller, happened to be out in California. He was over to my house for cocktails, and he saw some of these pieces I had made. And he said, Sasha, have you ever thought of, you know, doing fine china? And I said, no. And he said, I think you should. He said, I'll, I'll back you. He said, try it. And that, this is how I got into ceramics. Once I have a challenge and I find it, I step onto a new medium, a new material. Recently, I had a show in all magnesium, which I know of no sculptor working this material. As a matter of fact, I'm not even doing it anymore because it's too volatile, too explosive. It's, it's like playing Russian roulette, but I had the fun of doing it. And I created a show called Moon Age Sculpture, all done basically of magnesium, aluminum, exotic metals. Some of the magnesium ended up looking like molten gold, stainless steel, pure magnesium.
Okay, so that's, it jumps around a little bit in chronology, and I want to jump back as we're talking with Steve. But I couldn't eliminate that bit where they were showing the magnesium sculptures, which are something that I really love. And anyone who remembers it from science class, throwing that little bit of magnesium into a jar and seeing the sort of little explosion that happens is visceral, and then imagining the giant pieces that he was working with. So that's something that, you know, we'll get into, is that Sasha had a wide-ranging skill set. He had a wide-ranging intellect, if we wanted to get all pretentious in Ulysses' terms. He knew about process and materiality and was really sort of on the cutting edge in terms of bringing out the natural qualities of an exotic metal like magnesium that artists were not working with. All right, so Steve, there's a lot for us to kind of fill in the blanks in, in what we just looked at. I wanted to point out that for those of you who haven't heard about the Clay Club in the 1920s, 30s, and 40s in New York City, the Clay Club is now the Sculpture Center in Queens. So it still exists. They still have their archives. And the Clay Club, which was really set up as a high-functioning shared studio for both professional sculptors and people who were learning, always punched above its weight in terms of its ambition. And it's really no surprise that it morphed into, you know, the current-day Sculpture Center. And I'm pleased to say that Sculpture Center has really sort of reemphasized clay and is doing program, programming based around some of the glory years of the Clay Club. And they're revising some of that language now. Steve, do you want to fill in with any things that you know about in terms of his arrival in New York? They really sort of skirted around a lot of things. He was a window dresser at Macy's, right? And he was making sculptures and incorporating his own sculptures into the window dressings that he was using.
Well, his day job to pay the rent and to buy food was being a window dresser, as you said, at Macy's in Herald Square. Macy's in Bloomingdale's, a lot of the New York stores noted for their window displays, obviously. When I purchased the two oldest-known original whimsies from his first one-man show, the seller took his time in sending them to me. So he sent me as a gift one of the original Macy's window display pieces. So Sasha, basically, during the day was doing the Macy's windows, at night or after hours, doing these amazing clay sculptures. Exactly. The piece on the left is called Tumblers, and those are two little, you know, putti, two little cherubs. Each hair, you know, everything is all hand-applied, there's no glaze on it, those are the natural clay colors. That was a piece that I rescued probably 20 years ago. The mermaid piece, I believe I have photos of him actually working on that at the Clay Club. And as I told you yesterday, that mermaid will be coming to live with you at the Everson at one point. So that is a great joy for me to be able to, to say that. He basically moved to New York 1938, 1939. He would have been around 21 or 22 when he did these pieces. He got drafted, he went into the military in 1942, but still maintained a relationship with a friend who oftentimes, a lady friend, called herself Mrs. Brastoff. She couldn't have been further away from that. I actually have a collection of 50 handwritten letters that Sasha and this woman exchanged during that time period. In one of the letters, and you'll also be getting it, he describes an idea that he has for a character based on Carmen Miranda. And in the letter, he enclosed a lock of his hair so she, his lady friend, could match it to a wig of his design. I have the sketches for the wig. He threw the wig idea out the window and opted for the, the Army bag with the cutlery coming out of it, which is sort of hilarious, as we say, 75 pounds of costume. Pretty amazing. You know, at a time when even the slightest suspicion in the military that you were not 100% macho man, heaven forbid, you were even just on the softer, sensitive side, that suspicion would get you ostracized, kicked out of the Army. Here's 20 bucks, there's the closest bus stop, get the heck out of here. And the fact that he built an early career around this, you know, we've seen drag, I mean, drag's a very general term, and maybe it's not a word I'm fond of, but this is Kabuki-like impersonation to the highest order. Carmen Miranda said, you know, "He is more me than me." He did an extraordinary comic impersonation of her and other people. I've shown you, Garth, photos of other characters that he did. He didn't only do Carmen. Carmen was the most recognizable. That photo, the photo on the left is the one that I got from his studio. I was in his studio with his executrix, Filomena Bruno, and I saw the photo from across the room, and I said, you know, "Wow, Filomena, that's, that's a terrific photo of Anne Baxter." And she looked at me and rolled her eyes, and she said, "You better look at that a lot more, you know, closely." Of course, it's Sasha. In an original Howard Chute couture outfit. The other photo that you had to the right of that is just Sasha dressed up a night out on the town, you know, which is pretty, pretty wonderful that, you know, I told you, Garth, that great story. He would occasionally get dressed up and just walk down Pico Boulevard, you know, which is the main street north of where his house was located, and he would go shopping. You know, I think that's hilarious and wonderful. The photo on the right is him in the 70s, probably around '72, '73. One day, he was walking down Pico, and a lady came up to him and said, "Excuse me, aren't you Idolapino?" And Sasha said, "Well, of course I am. Who else would I be?" So that, that level of, of commitment to just being yourself, you know, those are the trailblazers that my generation and future generations can build their freedom in their lives on. I love that outfit. I don't think that was a Howard. I think that's just something that Sasha threw together. You know, he was a frequent shopper at Akron, you know, which was one of those kind of John's Bargain Store-type places here in LA. I don't know what event that was for, but that's him in his living room. Incredible.
So I want to jump back a little bit and talk about Wing Victory, the movie that he was in. And I do have a little clip of Wing Victory, and maybe this is the place to show it. I have it right here. So originally, he performed Wing Victory as a stage show, and Sasha was a member of the Contact Corps. Is that the name of it, Steve?
He was in the Contact caravan, which was the USO, you know, entertaining the troops' arm. What I discovered through these letters is that instead of living in the barracks with the other GIs, the other privates, you know, he went from New York to Miami Beach, the US Army had taken over all of the top hotels on the sand. And Sasha was living in a penthouse hotel unit with two other GIs. Because his talent and his personality was so engaging, there were two generals stationed there who had hired Sasha to give their children private art lessons for $5 a lesson. So not only did he not see any action, action, obviously, going over, he was sleeping on satin sheets with full-room service and everything. He was treated quite well. The Army hired Moss Hart to travel around the country to different Army bases and, in an undercover fashion, take notes. They wanted him to write the great American play about what the GIs, the draftees, and their families were going through. Well, oddly enough, this coincided with these little shows that they would put on while they were waiting for orders to be deployed. Sasha created the GI Carmen Miranda for one single performance in one of these shows. Now, we've all seen drag from wartime era, you know, where a guy will put a mop head on and sort of goof around and whatever. Sasha took this very seriously. Well, excuse me, imagine Moss Hart is in the audience taking notes when you come out as Carmen Miranda. Well, he was completely bowled over by this and actually wrote a scene in Wing Victory, which was the name of the play eventually. He wrote a scene to incorporate Sasha and his character into it. It toured the world for about six months, and then it was on to 20th Century Fox to make the film version of it. All of the performers in Wing Victory, many of whom were established actors, some of them were just starting out, Judy Holiday, Jeanne Crane. But when you see the credits, the credits include their Army title. So you have, you know, Lieutenant Lee J. Cobb, you know, who was a top actor. Edmund O'Brien was in that, too. A real interesting, interesting mix of talent. As he, Sasha mentions in the documentary, documentary, he's sketching, waiting for scenes to be shot for Wing Victory, and that was when he met, according to one of the letters, which is very funny, he tells his friend, "Today, I met a man named Zanuk," and he spells C-A-A-N-O-O-O-K. "Do you suppose he's an Eskimo?" And not really, you know, Sasha was thoroughly unimpressed by wealth and by notoriety because he, you know, Sasha was a star in his own right. So, you know, it was easy for him to deal with Rockefeller and the money and, you know, people that came to the opening parties. So Zanik, Daryl F. Zanik was Zanuk, obviously, recognized his talent. Charles Lemare, who was the head of the art department. And then he got to meet some of the costume designers. So they signed him to a seven-year contract, which was standard. He worked there only in 1946. He only did the three films, which he mentioned. If I'm Lucky with Carmen Miranda, Billy Rose's Diamond Horseshoe with Betty Grable. Again, Betty Grable, the biggest musical star in the world. And Razor's Edge, which is a wonderful film, he gets to work with Ole Cassini, who is involved with the star Gene Tierney, who was arguably, probably the best dramatic actress there in '46. It was Rockefeller who suggested, which you will see or have seen in the documentary, that he go into commercial ceramics production because he loved doing ceramics. And Rockefeller said, you know, "I will, I will back you. I will, you know, I'll be your financier." What's interesting is that the big factory that most people are aware of, which opened, thank you, Garth, good cue, Quincy Jones Factory, which opened in, on November 18th, 1953. There's my beautiful French 1875 Tiffany alarm clock going off. The Rockefeller fortune was doled out to the grandkids around January, February of '52. So he was, he was already a millionaire, but he had tons of extra cash left over, you know, burning a hole in his pocket to finance this operation. So anyway, Sasha traveled the world in Wing Victory. I have a box of clips. Again, this is all stuff that's coming to my friend Garth at the Everson. Clips of reviews, and, you know, review after review, they point, you know, this is a cast with hundreds of people in it, but they always point out Sasha and his performance of Carmen. So for him to end up at Fox and to actually design clothing for her, not only her personal wardrobe, but clothing for a film, was just, you know, it has a Forrest Gumpian-type edge to it, that everywhere he, you know, that his life just goes in all these great directions.
So I want to, in the interest of moving things along, we've only got another maybe 20 minutes to chat. I just want to show a very little clip of the Wing Victory film. And I wanted to point out that anyone masochistic enough to watch Wing Victory in its entirety, and not because the film is a bad film, but there, it is in its entirety on YouTube, but it is a terrible, terrible, low, low-resolution transfer, and it really is a bit of an effort to get through. And that's where I got this footage, that it's very low-resolution. If anyone knows where I can get a higher-resolution copy, I know we've talked about this, Steve, I'm desperate to get my hands on a better copy of Wing Victory. Oh, mother-in-law humor. Evergreen. Look at that physicality, ladies and gentlemen. Those platform shoes.
Well, and keep in mind, he's in those cardboard platform shoes.
Okay, so that clip is available for anyone who wants to go look at Wing Victory. So let's talk a little bit about, you mentioned Winthrop Rockefeller, you mentioned the funding of Sasha's factory. And I want to reinforce that Sasha Brastoff in no way, although I will say, many, many of the people who came out of the Cleveland Institute of Art, they were given an industrial design training. Victor Schreckengost, other people, were able to sort of go into industrial design in sort of many other materials. So I would reckon that somewhere in Sasha's training, he would have gotten a little bit of grounding in industrial processes. But I'm astounded how quickly, and I mean, he's throwing money at hiring great people from very early on in his factory. I mean, I've, I've got to handle a lot of Sasha Brastoff pieces. It varies a little bit in terms of material, but that Roman coin porcelain that Ulysses brought into Newark is amazing and vitreous and so perfect when it comes to its manufacture. So yes, if you want to, let me, you can grab a piece, and I wish everyone could have the opportunity to actually hold this in your hands. And some of the pieces that came out of his factory earlier were shockier and, you know, were not high-quality vitreous clay bodies. But he eventually really dials in his materials. So I'm going to pin your video here, Steve. Look at the, so he's using some sort of, I believe that the application of the decoration there is actually done with some sort of spinning wheel. So he was
Yes.
Spinning the piece around, and you can see that there's like, under-glazed pencil, it has this great texture on it that's creating the body of it. And then while he's spinning, he's got a very fine brush that he's applying the gold with. So, so beautiful. And what year was Roman coin?
And here's another, this is the big coffee server.
So really elegant silhouettes, you know, it has this timeless mid-century sort of quality to it. And he, he did a lot of employing of outside designers who would come in and sort of help design the silhouettes and the pieces. Can you talk about that a little bit, Steve?
Well, what's interesting, he, his first business was just himself. I mean, he didn't really give it a I mean, he didn't really give it a thought. It was kind of a sideline. I think he made just enough money to live on. He and Howard had just bought that house, I think it was $6,000, you know, for a house in West LA, million and a half now. Rockefeller was the one who said, let's expand and, you know, really start putting things in stores. And every famous pottery story has the same destroyed by fire, destroyed by mud, destroyed by earthquake, destroyed by divorce, whatever. So that was when Rockefeller really put his money where his mouth was and hired these amazing architects. I mean, to build that structure, which was half a city block long. I mean, these are, this is probably a Julia Schulman photograph. He was hired to photograph the property too. It's pretty amazing and Sasha was able to hire, as you pointed out, the best artists he could find to replicate his original designs. But he was also careful enough not to hire anyone that may have been slightly better than him. I think his work is perfection because I've collected the originals for many years. But, you know, he certainly didn't want anyone upstaging him. He would do the original design, he would create the line, whatever the line is, whether it was Celadon or abstract originals or whatever. And then he would assign to one, two or three artists depending on what the orders were for. At one point he was in 1,500 retail stores, so that's a lot of product, as you can imagine. He empowered them to sign his shortened version of his name as Sasha B. Even though he was Sasha B. So on occasion, there is work out there that is his original work. When he was on the assembly line, just sort of hanging out with the crew, where he would sign it with his own abridged name. The rule of thumb is, and I'll grab one of these. Anytime you see a fully hand-rendered name, obviously it's, it's his. But like many artists, and I have to say it myself, and I'm not an artist. He had several different signatures. He would do a different configuration of an S or whatever. But if you see his name in full, except on the resin animals, which he had nothing to do with the design of those, that's a whole other story. If you see his name in full or just the name Sasha, which is how the whimsies are signed, those are originals. What you're looking at now, these are commercial pieces. The poodle piece in the back, probably late 50s, 1960. The one in the front, the free-form dish is what he named a star steed, which is a stenciled image that is then painted around and then embellished on the inside, lots of gold work. The surf ballet, surf ballet, I mean, technically, you know, it isn't, it, it's just a glazing process to, to create that. I love the ad slits, the ad slits are, are great. Sasha with that sort of Cato-like bookshelf with all those great items. You know, I watched a film the other night on TCM that had never aired before. It was an old Vince Edwards film, Garth, and I thought of you. And there are three original Brastoff masks in the movie. I've never seen that. So anytime he, his work pops up in a film, I find it very exciting. You see rotation in the upper right-hand corner, that's the porcelain dinnerware with the fans on it. In the mid 1950s, service for 12 of his porcelain was about $500 to $600. That was an absolute fortune. Early on, when the book came out, I got a lovely letter from a lady who had purchased a set when she got married and it took her four years to pay the set off at, you know, Gumps or Cantland Chafe in one of those apartment stores.
So I, this is a good transition. I, I wanted you to talk just for a minute about the sort of celebrity milieu and the opening of the Quincy Jones factory and the guests that, that were there. I mean, can you just go down a few of those sort of bold-faced Hollywood names that he was rubbing shoulders with all the time?
Well, they were the top stars and you figured Edward G. Robinson had already a formidable collection of amazing art. You know, which was sold in 57 to satisfy the divorce that he was going through. He was there, Shazza Gabor was there, Marilyn was there. Marilyn, you know, big star, Mitzi Gaynor, my gosh, you know, South Pacific. Gary Merrill, I, he was married to Betty Davis. I mean, it's incredible that, I mean, I know from the three stores I've had and I've had celebrity parties. If you get one fairly big quasi-name to show up, it's a home run, you know. So to have all of these people, you know, wish you well on the opening night. I mean, it really is, really is sensational and it's wonderful. I had conversations with some of them over the years and it was, you know, it was quite a destination. I, the thought of that wonderful building being knocked down still makes me, makes me cringe.
So I want to talk timeline a little bit. So Sasha opened up his first factory, which was a Quonset hut and definitely not as sexy as this Quincy Jones designed, a Quincy Jones designed factory. That was 1948?
It was 1947. He's, he signed in, in 45, he signed a seven-year contract at Fox, starting in 1946. You know, because he was still getting settled here, whatever. He was living in a rented room in Westwood, close to UCLA. There was a housing shortage here at that time for all the GIs. The Quonset hut is still there. There are Quonset huts on Sepulveda Boulevard and I am bound and determined. When things open up and you come out here for two weeks, we're going to find it, Garth. He was there for six months, maybe eight months, then needed to ramp up production. So he moved into a small factory space. There were three or four other artists working for him. I've actually seen artist trials when he was interviewing people, they were trying out to be his artists. These pieces were fired, some of them were horrible. I've seen them turn out on, on eBay. Anyway, then the Quincy Jones building opened November 23rd, 1953. And he was there until mid-April 62. So he was there for almost 10 years.
So I wanted to point out that really he was so prolific. You mentioned that he was in 1,500 retailers. I would encourage anyone who's interested in Sasha Brastoff to go to eBay and particularly the commercial pieces that we showed. Are available at astounding low prices, unfairly low prices. They're, they're ubiquitous, there are a whole lot of them, but you can find some real treasures. But there was really only a 15-year period where Sasha was kind of involved with the factory and involved in overseeing it. Can you briefly tell us, Steve, about the story about how Sasha and the factory parted ways? Even though the company continued without him for some time?
Well, what happened is Sasha had one relationship of significance that I know of. It was with a gentleman named Don Sando. Everyone's dead now, so I can mention their name, it doesn't matter. But he was this, you know, hot, bad boy on a motorcycle, kind of, you know, like a Conway Twitty type. And he said to Sasha one day, how is it that Rockefeller is a multi-multi-multi-millionaire? And your name is on the outside of that factory? Look at how we live. Well, we live, you know, he was in a little modest house, whatever. So Sasha went to Rockefeller, who, you know, they were good friends. And he said, I don't want to be on salary anymore. I want a piece of the action. Now Rockefeller told him straight out, this factory hemorrhages money. This is my, you know, it's negative cash flow. I mean, Rockefeller had tons of money, he lived on a 10,000 acre ranch. But he said, yes, I will oblige. They reconvened three months later, six months later, whatever, for Sasha to get his profit-sharing check. And Rockefeller gave him a bill and said, you know, you owe me $20,000 or whatever. I don't know the exact figures, they don't affect the story. And Sasha was incensed, he was horrified, he, you know, had a fit. So he ended up, he got so depressed, and I do have letters, which you'll also be getting, chronicling his, you know, questioning his life, you know, what am I doing, you know, where am I going, et cetera. So because of this relationship with Don Sando, he ended up quitting his factory. And of course, they went down to a skeleton staff. They were allowed to use his name on products, either rehashings of old Brastoff designs, or they would purchase items and just simply put his name on them or labels on them. So you'll see Horizons, a ceramic line, you see the resin pieces, whatever. Sasha had nothing to do with, with any of those. They were actually kicked out of the factory because they owed many months of that rent and they moved to another one.
Okay, so there is a period from about 1962, Sasha becomes very depressed, he's sort of wandering in the wilderness. He really doubles down on, I think, both his jewelry and metal sculpture, which I think eventually kind of lift him out of that torpor. The documentary was filmed in 1969. I'm going to show one more little clip just because I want people to come away with a sense of his abilities when it came to the metal sculpture and being a multidisciplinary artist. And can you tell us a little bit to set up this scene about the Esplanade and sort of his retail rebirth?
Well, Esplanade was an old, single-room motel, 246 26th Street on the Santa Monica Brentwood border. Sasha took it over and transformed each room into a jewelry gallery and art gallery. Howard Schub had his couture, you know, he did costumes for films, but he also made Judy Garland's clothing, you know, private clothing, whatever, personal wardrobe. So it was very similar to what would have become a mall concept years, years later. He had live, go-go dancing models in these cages that he designed out of wrought iron. I mean, it really is incredible. Another star-studded event, you know, which was pretty amazing at that time. And the, the physical structure of the building and all of the wrought iron that he designed and manufactured is still there today. Which is fun, so yeah.
So I'm going to go ahead and roll this clip and it both shows the opening of the Esplanade and it, it shows and talks a little bit about some of the metalwork and other work that Brastoff was doing in the late 60s. I would enjoy the groovy music and production from this.
Yes, it's great.
The opening of the Esplanade was a social and cultural affair. Hosted by Brastoff and his friend and business partner for more than 20 years, noted costume designer Howard Schub. The party paid tribute to Brastoff's ability to create afresh, a total environment. By now Brastoff's works were in the Metropolitan Museum of Art and other leading national galleries, an outstanding private collection. Also, they have been critically acclaimed in various issues of Architectural Digest and other publications.
The most important influence on my life, how can I say it? It's, it's constantly changing.
flamboyant jester and highly disciplined artist, public actor and private person. Amused at the absurdity of much of life, yet continually seeking and finding beauty and hope in nature and in his art. The seeming contradictions are but many parts of the complete artist and craftsman Sasha Brastoff.
Was that, was that his pickup truck that the sculptures were in the back of? I, I want to imagine that.
No, not at all. And what's, that was from the Marina Metal Arts Company.
Okay.
He drove a 64 Ford Galaxy convertible yellow, which disappeared off the planet because Philomena hid it somewhere. Nobody knows where the car is. I mean, I would have been driving that.
So I want to, let's see, let me close this. Bear with me one last time, I'm going to bring up my images. I'm going to just show a few other things that are interesting from Sasha Brastoff. And then we're going to end by some life-affirming erotica from Sasha Brastoff. So you are, so we got to wrap up within the next like five or six minutes sadly. But then we're going to hang out and anyone who wants to ask some questions, we'll be here for another like 15 or 20 minutes, minutes, if that sounds fair. So if you are averse to seeing like 69 phalluses and penises crowded into one glorious tile, avert your eyes in, in a few minutes, I'm going to give you that warning. As with many parts of his life, whenever Sasha Brastoff went for something, he went big. So I am going to, okay, so this is probably the only Franklin Mint object that, you know, I will ever show in one of these Zoom sessions. But I lust after this incredible set of gold Franklin Mint detailed tiny sculptures that Sasha did. Steve, can you tell us about these? I, I am utterly sort of charmed and obsessed with these pieces.
Well, they are sterling silver with 24-karat gold embellishment. You could only buy them one piece at a time through Franklin Mint. They were $280 each in the mid to late 70s. There are six figures and then there's the stands and whatever. I've actually owned three of these sets. And, you know, they came with the boxes and the COAs and all that stuff. But considering a lot of the junk that Franklin Mint has come out with, these are beautifully rendered, you know. Garth, I've actually had some of the original prototype waxes that I rescued from the house. I used to keep them in the freezer. The detailing is amazing. They do come up for sale occasionally on eBay. I would suggest if somebody wanted to buy one, to make sure that you have the boxes, you have the paperwork, they all tell a story. I met a gentleman who actually has a Franklin Mint website and there were only 711 of these that were made. And since the trend over the past few years has been to just scrap and melt down everything, which is horrible. I don't really know how many of these have survived, but they're fabulous.
So, you know, sort of praising the Franklin Mint right here, you can get a set of these, not necessarily with all of the boxes, for about $1,000 on eBay. So if you do the math of the fact that each of these was $250 in the early 70s, which, you know, would be eight times that now. Bad investment if you were putting aside money for your kid's college by investing in the Franklin Mint. I am also obsessed with the fact that, you know, Sasha was very restless when he was experimenting with things. He made jewelry of which Steve has fabulous jewelry. But he made a series of, he was one of the first artists that I know of who was working with holograms and did a series of hologram jewels, jewelry. What were the years roughly that he, he started working in holograms?
The jo, the holograph pieces were late 70s. And in most of them, they were images of his own jewelry that he had made. You know, which is so interesting because, you know, he, a hologram improperly lit looks like a giant opal. If you have the right spotlight on it, and he actually encouraged people who wore the holographic jewelry to keep a small pen light in their pockets so they could show it off. I thought that was hilarious. So that jewelry looked, looked the best. There were other holograms on the market. Invariably, his are all signed in, inside of it, you can tell if, if they're his. They're amazing.
So lovely. All right, so to reward those of you who have stayed with us for this whole 90-minute conversation, we're going to wrap things up. But we are going to show some of Sasha's erotic output and I will And I will say that during the Eversin show, we are not going to shy away from showing the erotica. And I'm really hoping that a few of these pieces will wind up in that show. I won't show this next piece forever, but I will because Steve brought it up in tandem with talking about the couple that thought that all of Sasha's pieces were just cutesy when we were talking about the word musical. So here we go, you know, interspecies power sexual dynamics. Anything that you'd like to say about this particular piece?
Well, in, in common to what Rick said earlier, I mean, the rat is Sasha. I mean, look at the expression. It's the same expression that's on the amphibious extraterrestrial that you'll show. That's Sasha and the fish is Don. It's them 100%. And you're absolutely getting that for the exhibit because I know where it is and you're getting it.
Awesome. It is.
It's yours.
Galleries, let's see, let me show off this platter first, which it's amazing the dance that he could do, like, you know, sort of with abstraction. And the way that he used all of his sort of visual language, the way that that was applicable to anything that he was doing, whether it was the big metal sculptures or these pieces.
Well, in this one I've located too. I mean, over the years, when I've sold things to keep the lights on, I've really only sold my best things to my closest friends. So, or I donated them to MoCAD. So we have access to that stuff. This now resides in Las Vegas with a great friend who is also a talented ceramic painter. So he was thrilled to hear about you, Garth, on the show. And absolutely, he's, he's gonna, you know, make you accessible to that.
Great. And the last piece that we're going, going to show, Mea Culpa, this is not a ceramic piece. It is one of my favorite pieces. So I find myself, you know, once again gravitating to really loving a non-ceramic piece, which I've totally made peace with over the years. But this next piece is enamelled and we hinted at this a little bit, but Steve wanted this in his catalog. The publisher shot it down because of the sensitive people in the graphics department. But I will say that he did sneak it in toward the end. So if you look at Steve's book, there is an image of Sasha's bedroom where this piece hung. And you can see it as a little tiny, a little tiny square. So at least you have that satisfaction. So here's the visual image, I guess, that we will leave seared into people's brains. So Steve, you have actually counted the number of phalluses that are in this particular tile. And the piece itself is, what, about six or eight inches?
Six inches square.
Okay.
And, you know.
How many, how many phalluses grace this piece?
Well, there were 69. And he would frequently use the numbers six and nine in his jewelry. I had a solid gold pendant with an erect penis on it that had a six and a nine on the outside that I used to wear to pride, you know, events, whatever. So I have no doubt that he did that on purpose. That's just my skin on it. It really is an incredible image. So.
So there you have it. I think, you know, we're sort of ending with, coming back to the fact that no matter what Sasha Brastow was doing throughout his career, he was bringing a sense of obsession, counting the number of phalluses that were going into this tiny six-inch tile. I think no amount of detail was sort of too great for Sasha. So Steve, in, in sort of closing, this is really the, the first, certainly post, can you talk a little bit? There have been a few museum exhibitions that have included some Sasha Brastow work since his death. But even those museums, including LACMA, didn't really treat his work, I think, with the respect that I feel like it should be treated with. Can you talk a little bit about that legacy vis-à-vis museums?
The unfortunate thing, there was a huge retrospective at LACMA, Modern Design, I believe, 1945, 1965. It was working in tandem with MoCAD. There was one particular piece chosen for the show, but they could not locate it before the show. Now, it was a production piece. I have three versions of it myself, but the people involved, someone wanted to get their name on the donation card, so they, you know, they didn't include it. I went to the show and there are two Roman coin plates in the show with another company's name on them. Now, obviously, you're a stickler for detail and you're a historian. I mean, this slide flipped me out. He has been included in some much smaller showings. You know, obviously the Eversin is, and I, every time I talk about you and I say, and it's a real, it's a real museum, you know, it's not this, you know, not that, you know, MoCAD is wonderful and I love Bill. I miss Bill. He was the greatest. He was a great print. But his were temporary pop-up museums. They were fabulous, but they were, they were temporary. So I'm very excited about this. So whatever you need, whatever you want, it's yours.
Thank you. So we're going to be focusing on Brastow's ceramic output mainly for this, but not exclusively for this exhibition. It will be in a fairly modestly sized gallery, but we are going to be paying tribute to Sasha in stuffing and overstuffing this gallery with goodness and with jaw-dropping pieces. We'll be highlighting, video will be highlighting pieces from parts of his personal archive as well. And I have a feeling that this is not the be-all and-all for both Steve and myself in Sasha Brastow's project. So if you are already a Sasha Brastow enthusiast, if you are only catching the Sasha Brastow bug, there is a lot of academic work to be done. There is a lot of work to be done in terms of sort of helping his legacy and to bring his work back to museums. If you are interested in playing a part in this sort of grand, maybe quixotic crusade, I am obsessed with Sasha Brastow and his legacy. And it certainly has made its mark on the Eversin. So I would invite you to get in touch with me if you are interested in playing a part because we are, we are just getting started, Steve.
I agree. And, and it's about time. Excuse me, long overdue. So.
All right. So Steve, I want to thank you so much. You and I could go on and have gone on for hours and hours and hours. And this is only the tip of the iceberg in terms of the memorabilia and the stories and the shenanigans and the admiration that you have for Sasha Brastow. So we're going to hang out for another 15 minutes and say hi to one who wants to unmute themselves and have a little bit of a chat. So great to see people that I know and love on this call. And I'm so excited to continue the conversation. So once again, Steve, thank you and looking forward to seeing you when everything opens up again.
Thank you for doing it. And if you want me around for the questions, fine. If not, you talk to your friends or?
No, I definitely do. So stick around. I'm going to stop the recording and go stop us on Facebook. And we will be sort of just a private Zoom group now. So we can say anything or do any dishing that we want to do. All right. So I'm going to stop recording and feel free to.